This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call the August seventeenth, two thousand twenty council meeting to order at seven P. M. Welcome, everyone. Are there any additions or corrections to tonight's agenda? Okay, if not, is there a motion to accept the agenda for this evening?
I'll move to accept the agenda as written.
Motion's been made to accept the agenda as written. Is there a second?
Counselor Webb will second.
Thank you, Counselor Webb. Would you call a roll, Stephanie, please?
Counselor McNair.
Aye.
Mayor Hobart.
Aye.
Counselor Allen.
Aye.
Counselor Wagner.
Aye.
Counselor Webb.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie. There are no presentations tonight. I just have a short mayor's report. A week ago today, I was appointed to the Columbia County Jail Operating Committee Advisory Committee, the J O C A C, to fill a position that was filled by Ellen Johnson. And so I accepted the request and I went over to the courthouse and met with the county commissioners and they approved my my appointment on that committee. So I just wanted to relay to the council that I'm getting involved over there and with the county jail. So and that will be in position two and it expires June twentieth of two thousand twenty-one. So I have my first meeting tomorrow night virtually. So just wanted to relay to the council what I was doing there. And that's the only thing I have to report from the mayor. Are there any? So it doesn't look like there's any council committee meeting reports tonight.
Yeah. Mayor Hobart.
Yes, go ahead.
This is Counselor McNair.
Yes.
Yeah.
Will you be doing that as a private citizen?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely, yes. Thanks for the question. I will not be representing Vernonia in any way. Are there any topics from the floor tonight?
I have one.
Okay.
I have a letter to read into the record. So bear with me.
Okay.
Respect respective members of council and citizens present, I have asked this be read today to express my concern on the city's new committee that was formed in response to the current societal climate on racism. First, I would like to make one point extremely clear. I am an American. When you hear that statement, I hope the only colors you see are red, white, and blue. For strength and valor, for purity and innocence, and for vigilance, perseverance, and justice. I believe in my country and my constitution, a document that has evolved over the decades to ensure the perseverance of its people regardless of race, such as Amendment One, Freedom of Expression in Religion. Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof or abridging the freedom of speech or of the press or the right of the people peacefully to assemble and to petition the government for redress of grievances. Amendment thirteen, Slavery and Involuntary Servitude. Neither slavery nor involuntary servitude except as punishment for crime whereof the party shall have been duly convicted shall exist within the United States or any place subject to their jurisdiction. Amendment fourteen, Rights Guaranteed, Privileges and Immunities of Citizenship, Due Process, and Equal Protection. One, all persons born or naturalized in the United States and subject to the jurisdiction thereof are citizens of the United States and the state wherein they reside. No state shall make or reinforce or enforce any law which shall abridge the privileges or immunities of citizens of the United States, nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor deny to any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of laws. Amendment fifteen, Rights of Citizens to Vote. The right of citizens of the United States to vote shall not be denied or abridged by the United States or by any state on account of race, color, or previous condition of servitude. Amendment nineteen, Women's Suffrage Rights. The right of citizens of the United States to vote shall not be denied or abridged by the United States or by any state on account of sex. By definition, racism is prejudice, discrimination, or antagonism directed against a person or people on the basis of their membership in a particular racial or ethnic group, typically one that is a minority or marginalized. In today's world, we see proof daily that racism can go both ways. Racism is not black or people of color specific. Right now, today, I know several white people that are experiencing hate because of their skin tone. The acts of general hate that give the word racism a meaning in the dictionary cannot be measured. And please do not insinuate the slavery of blacks over a hundred years ago because if you do not know, there was a high number of white slaves in that time, and yet I do not see Irish Lives Matter signs. In my lifetime, yes, I have experienced racism, sexism, and bias. When I was eight years old, a kid called me a nigger. I had no idea what that word meant. I was a kid in Veneta, Oregon, a small town much like Vernonia in the eighties. Needless to say, I whooped that girl, not because of the word, but because of the hate and anger in her voice when she said it. That was the reaction of a child. In the nineties, I moved to the Washington County area and was called a sick while walking down the street. Often, people would automatically speak Spanish, assuming I did not speak English. While in Tennessee, I went to a bar with two white friends. Most of the patrons in the bar were black, and the minute we walked in, we were stared at. When my two white female friends went on the dance floor, everyone walked off, making it clear we were not welcome there. Growing up, my Kentucky-born biological father told me if I ever brought a black man home, he would disown me. I asked him one day, how can you love my mom? She is extremely dark. He said, it is not the same. She is not black. These are some of the incidents of racism and bias that have occurred in my life. As an adult, I do not hold any group of people culpable for the actions of these single individuals. The only person that has the right to define me is me. It is any person's right to have any opinion about me and view me how they choose, and I do not have to agree. I will never advocate for the dissolution of free speech regardless of an individual's opinion or rhetoric pains me. I do not believe that the city should promote any side in the debate of racism or bias for the simple fact that one group's thoughts and values may be extremely different from that of another. But that does not make it wrong. It makes me, sorry. That does not make it wrong. It makes them free-thinking Americans. For the city to take any action on this subject, it will at some point alienate a citizen or a group of citizens. I have lived in the Vernonia zip code for over a decade now, and I have never felt threatened or less than because of color, gender, or socioeconomics. If the city would like to promote an open arms and heart platform to make Vernonia more appealing to all, I am for it. But that should be the term, "all." If you choose one group, you would also need to list the opposing groups, and that will be a very long list. Do not forget one, because when a city would be promoting inequality and disproportionate representation, it is my opinion that conversation and community involvement has always been one of Vernonia's greatest attributes. The group wants to advocate for discussion on the subject. More power to them. But it should not be the city's position to outwardly proclaim an opinion on this matter. The city should represent all without prejudice. If, as an entity, it is not able to do that, they are failing at representing every citizen regardless. It is my hope that Vernonia will advocate for every person that lives here regardless of what side of the proverbial line they stand on. I would like to thank you for your time and leave you with this final thought. Making Vernonia inclusive of all is agreeing that there is not a limitation on a person's ability to participate in citizenry. That's it.
May I ask who that is from?
It is not signed.
So it was an anonymous letter?
Can I ask a procedural question? I appreciate. Would that have been accepted during a normal in-person meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
There's no law for them to state their name and address. That is actually only a land use law. So during public hearings.
So when we have we have people fill out a form that says, and we ask them to state their name and address before they address council, correct?
Yes, they do not have to.
Okay.
Let's move on.
I had questions, and I would appreciate having the time to ask them and have them answered appropriately without being cut off.
To answer your question, it is not state law, nor is it written in council rules that they must state their name and address. It is on the form, not that it's a requirement, but just that they have to fill out the form.
Thank you very much.
And we normally do not have discussion after an audience participation. We might have some discussion, but we we make no decisions on that. So okay, we're going to move on to consent agenda for acceptance, none. Consent agenda for approval, city council meeting minutes for August third, two thousand twenty can be found on page one through four. Any discussion on the meeting minutes? If not, would somebody like to make a motion to accept the city council meeting minutes for August third, two thousand twenty?
Counselor Webb. Accept the consent agenda for approval.
Is there a second?
Counselor Allen will second.
Motion's been seconded. Would you call a roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Webb. Mayor Hobart.
Aye.
Counselor Allen.
Aye.
Counselor Wagner.
Aye.
Counselor McNair.
I wasn't present, so I was absent.
Do not wish to vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie. Is there any unfinished business tonight? If not, we'll move on to new business and staff report Lincoln School Conservation Easement. And I will either turn it over to Stephanie or Matt on that one. Hi, Matt.
Thank you, Mayor Matt Straight presenting for staff tonight. We have an item before you where we needed some direction from the city council. This is regarding the Lincoln School property, and in two thousand fifteen, the owner of the property at the time requested to change the zoning on the property to commercial zoning. The city agreed to change that zoning, but they also agreed to do so with a conservation easement placed on the property to basically assure that the property would stay like it looks today, very historical function. And in that conservation easement, which was attached to your staff report, it stated that if the applicant wants to use the building for commercial use, that was permitted by right. But if they wanted to use it for any other kind of use, they had to come to the city council to request permission for that alternative use. Well, somebody purchased the building from the person who originally started the conservation easement, and now they want to turn it into essentially a single-family home or residence. And in doing so, they're requesting some internal changes, adding some restrooms here, adding a kitchen there, those kind of things to try and make it more like a single-family home. We've included drawings of what that would look like in your staff report. We've included the full conservation easement in your staff report. And in discussion with our city attorney, we felt that we were going to bring this to the city council to request if the proposed change to a single-family use was acceptable or not. This is not a land use action. Our city attorney wanted me to clarify that. This is really just the city council agreeing that the proposed changes are acceptable as far as the use goes. After the city council takes an action tonight, we have an actual land use hearing set up on Thursday night with our planning commission, and that's a zoning issue because right now it's in a commercial zone. And our commercial zone specifically says that if you want to do a residential use in a commercial zone, it takes a conditional use permit. And so the hearing for that conditional use permit is this Thursday. But we needed to get this in front of you first to make sure that the use was acceptable through the conservation easement with the city council. So on the second page here, we have a suggested motion that the city council finds the proposed modifications do not alter the structure in a way that will alter the values listed in the staff report that are therefore permitted by the city. That's our recommended motion. That's the extent of my presentation. The applicant's representative is here as well. If you have any questions, that's Dan there. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Matt.
So this is Counselor Wagner. I have some prior knowledge of this issue as I was the head of the planning commission when this was initially brought forth and recommendation for me to city council at that time. So just want you all to be aware of that. Not sure it's any type of or any, but I want you all to know that.
Thank you, Stephen. Any other questions or discussion from the council?
Mayor Hobart.
Just go ahead, Counselor.
I was on the council on both times when we dealt with this. One time, the initial conservation easement, and then we used the conservation easement to restrict the use of the proposed use. So as far as I can tell, this pretty much falls under what we were looking for from the standpoint that it didn't change the value of the property or the building to a great extent and still maintain the structural value from a historical standpoint.
And so and so Counselor McNair, you're kind of agreeing with this proposal, then, if you agree with it?
I have no issue with what they're attempting to do because it basically falls within what we were, what the original conservation easement was about.
Right. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Webb.
I'll try that hand thing. It seemed to work. The only thing I can see on there is there is going to be a deck put on the back of the building, but I don't know. I mean, that'll change the appearance in the back, but I don't, you know, I'm assuming when I read through this all, you know, that original conservation easement was to try to preserve the look of the school. But I really don't have a concern with that deck on the back. As long, I think that as long as the front stays the same basic structure, I think I'd still accept it.
Any other questions or discussions? Go ahead, Dan.
So the only other thing that may not be mentioned on that is that she wants to update the windows. Because, one, the windows are old aluminum single-pane windows, and, two, they're like seven foot tall. And so if you think of a single hung window, it's like three and a half foot that she has to lift up as an older gal. So she wants to replace them with new vinyl windows, and only the bottom two foot would open. I think from an appearance standpoint, it will not change the look of the school. She's well aware of this conservation easement and the fact that we are not to touch the wooden gutters, the brick, the whole look, the flagpole, the whole idea of it. So I just wanted, I noticed that that wasn't on the drawing that was included. And so I just wanted to make sure that that was okay as well.
Could you identify the speaker there? Could you identify who you are and
Yeah, sorry. I'm Dan Douse, the owner of Double D Contracting here in Columbia County, and I am the general contractor for this project for the homeowner who purchased the Vernonia School.
Okay, so you're the owner, rep?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, thank you. If I understand you correctly. Dan, can you hear me?
Again now.
Yes, sir. Sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah. If I understand you correctly, this isn't going to change the aesthetic appearance of the building as we see it now. It'll still have, the windows will still be the same dimensions. It's just that they won't open. It's open two feet or something.
Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
This is Counselor Wagner. I'm sorry, my computer disconnected for half a moment when Counselor Webb was asking about the deck. Was that regarding egress from the deck?
No, my question was more about the appearance from that backside. But I'm not too concerned about that. If it was something off the front, then we'd be really changing the look of the old building. But I think in the back, I mean, the only people who are going to probably see it are the neighbors from above, on the street above.
Okay, then my question is, is egress from the deck not required? Because my understanding, that's off one of the sleeping quarters, correct?
It's off the kitchen.
Dan, that's probably a better question for you to answer. I'm not familiar with the building codes and whether or not they would need egress from that porch or from the deck.
By egress, do you mean stairs off of the deck? Yeah, there will be stairs off of the deck.
Okay, because they're not shown in the drawing.
Oh. Well, they should be.
Well, that's why I asked the question. I was a little concerned. And also.
Yeah, no, understandable. It is not off of a sleeping quarters. Sorry to interrupt. It is not off of the sleeping quarters, but there was planned to do stairs off of the porch, and if they did not make it into the drawings, I apologize.
Yeah, no, you're right. It's off the dining gathering area. You are correct. So quick question about sleeping area two, no closet? I mean, I'm just asking questions because you've got all this in here. And then also, my understanding was that there was a requirement that the building be brought up to earthquake code. Does the change to residential eliminate that? Or does the work that you're doing take care of that?
We have not included that in there, and we are not sure. If the city of Vernonia tells us we need to update seismic, then we will include updating seismic in our plans. And also sleep two, there will be a closet. It's not laid out very much, but if you look at the classrooms, the four classrooms, they're all symmetrical. And if you see where the sort of existing table is, that area will be made a closet.
Right, because I noticed in sleep area one, that's what you did. You created a walk-in closet.
So it will be a similar thing in sleep two.
Okay. I figured it was. I just wanted to make sure that it was because we're looking at these and being asked to make, you know, some recommendations or approvals. I just want to make sure that we are fully informed. Thank you. And I appreciate that you know about the seismic. Thank you very much.
Okay, after, any other discussion or questions for Dan from the council?
I have one. I have one, Mayor, Counselor Allen.
Go ahead, Counselor Allen.
Dan, this question is probably for you. It's really hard to see with this little print that I was given, but it basically looked like you were making two bedrooms, adding a kitchen, adding laundry, adding two bathrooms, adding a door cut out onto the deck. And what's the ceiling plan?
The ceiling will stay as is.
Okay, what about the fire sprinkler plan?
That will stay as is as well unless the city of Vernonia asks us to do something different.
I don't even honestly know if it's working or what. I just wonder if things were changing. Nothing is being addressed.
The only thing I know about that is that she wanted to reduce down from a commercial to a residential water service, and they denied that because the reason for it is the sprinkler system. So I would guess that it works, but, you know, if they require we have that tested, then that's understandable.
Yeah, really what makes sense to keep it a water service and not make sure it's functional and up to date or tested.
Sure, sure.
Thank you, Dan.
So I had, sorry, Counselor Allen. I have one follow-up question that I had forgotten to ask. So this is a conditional use, not a permanent change back? Residential, correct?
Matt?
You cut off a part of that, but this is not the conditional use for you tonight. This is just consistency with the conservation easement. But the intention is to change it to residential. But the intention to change it to residential and keep it residential is my understanding.
We've gotten off topic too.
I'm sorry, Counselor McNair, did you say something?
Yeah, the, the question is about the conservation easement, what about, uh, what the planning commission's gonna do?
I was asking simply what the owners are planning on asking for. And I'm sorry if that is considered off topic. I felt it was part of this whole question.
I missed all of that. I guess I got disconnected. I'm, I think I'm back on though. Okay. So I didn't hear any of what you said, Counselor Wagner, but I, rather than asking to repeat it, are we ready to move on maybe?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd call for a vote.
Okay. Anyone like to ma- make a motion to move forward with this, um, so they can take it to the planning commission on Thursday? Stephanie, do you wanna?
The motion, the motion is actually written on the end of your staff report.
Counselor Webb?
Go ahead, Counselor Webb.
Uh, I'll make the motion that, uh, the city council finds that the proposed modifications do not alter the structure in a way that will alter the values listed above in the presentation given to us here and, and that therefore permitted and, and are therefore permitted by the city.
I'll second that, Mayor.
And thank you for the second. Uh, would you call a roll please, Stephanie?
Uh, Counselor McNair?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Counselor Wagner? I can't hear you, can you give me a thumbs up maybe?
Aye.
Thank you.
Did you hear me?
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
And Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie. At this time, we're ready to move on to the Vernonia Trailhead proposal from the CZ Trailhead Trail Committee. And and I see Dale and Katie and Tony's on to... Who wants to lead off this discussion?
I think we're gonna let Dale.
Okay, Dale. Would, would you like to introduce yourself, Dale, and, and to the council again and?
Um, I'd be glad to introduce myself and, and, uh, my fellow committee members. So my name's Dale Latham. Uh, I'm a member of the Crown Zellerback Citizens Advisory Committee. Um, I have a dubious distinction of being the only committee member who does not live in Columbia County. And to make matters worse, I live in Portland. Um, as a matter of fact, I was telling a friend of mine in Portland, uh, a couple of weeks ago that I was gonna meet with the city council to, uh, propose a trailhead. And he quickly responded, "You are either arrogant or incredibly stupid to be telling the city of Vernonia what they should do about a trailhead." And, uh, I, all I could think of is, uh, I'm probably gonna prove him right on both counts tonight. Um, uh, having said that, um, actually, uh, Tony is the chair of our committee. And, um, and as an outsider to the community, I'd have to say, uh, he's been a great committee chair and a great assist to me. Um, uh, I, uh, was, uh, uh, telling him a few months ago that, um, the only thing that, uh, I thought the city needed to establish a trailhead was parking. Um, uh, and he quickly said, "There's plenty of parking." Um, and we took it from there. Um, but before I get into that, um, I'd actually like to, um, uh, introduce Casey um, and, uh, have him give you the real, the background, uh, that you really need before we can really talk about a trailhead proposal. Oh, you're on mute, Casey.
Sorry about that. Uh, okay, guys, I'm, I'm, uh, kinda working on a combination of, uh, desktop and my phone, so I hope it works fine. But I guess background wise, uh, obviously y'all know about the CZ Trail and the improvements years that have been part of, uh, uh, twenty years in progress, uh, that many of you, um, have, uh, some of you have been involved with in one way or another. Um, so, uh, we're really looking how we make that connection to the Banks Vernonia Trail and have, uh, made a lot of progress over the last couple of years. We're currently working on, uh, these through the Holz Trailhead, or to the, through the Holz property at the end of Knott Street. Uh, and, uh, trying to formulate the plan on how the ultimate connection works with Banks Vernonia Trail. Um, Dale's proposal here today is to make that, uh, more clear to the visit, visitors, uh, uh, that come from the Banks Vernonia Trail or the Crown Zellerback Trail, uh, how that connection is, is, uh, ultimately happens. Um, we kind of broken it down to a phased approach, um, with the that's been, uh, proposed and that is in, uh, in planning and is, is happening as we speak. Um, the different phases of that over, uh, 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 the next year, the two years, the whatever it takes sooner the better. Um, how we communicate that to the users of, uh, in the Crown Zellerback Trail with the Banks Vernonia Trail. So, um, y'all should have a map on right now of our, looks like air with second here. Said, our phase one plan, uh, works, that is, uh... Sorry, there's some background noise there I'm competing with. Um, so working on easement arrangement out through Randy Holz's property. Um, Randy Holz, uh, been a blessing to work with on, uh, developing an easement agreement through his, uh, hundred-plus acre parcel, uh, at the end of Knott Street to get to, uh, an existing mainline road that we have, the county already has recreational access to. So, uh, that represents the largest piece of private property that we have to get through to finalize the Banks Vernonia Trail connection. On your on your packet here, you'll see our mapped out approach of how that's gonna work. Drawing key that right now. Let's go. We have, uh, if you refer to the map, um, basically our current end of the trail is, is marked out on that map of, uh, what we call the berm, there's essentially a berm there. Now, for many years now, people have been trespassing through Randy Holz's property and he, um, hasn't made a big issue of it, but, uh, is willing to make an official county CZ Trail easement pretty much through where people have already gone through to get to the end of Knott Street. Um, so, at the moment, we are looking towards, uh, providing signage that will communicate to the user that the current CZ Trail to Banks Vernonia connection would be at the end of Knott Street, uh, to a trailhead that's in development, following Knott Street to Highway forty-seven, and ultimately to the Mill Pond or Vernonia Lake. Um, over the next several months, uh, we plan on developing a Holz Trailhead when we finalize the easement with the Holz family. To develop the Holz Trailhead where we have an organized parking area and some trailhead amenities, including signage and, uh, and, uh, some interpretive signage to, uh, speak about the history of the Holz family along with, uh, other history related to that specific location. Uh, from there, we have limited improvements that we have to do through Randy Holz's property. But once we get to the end of Randy Holz's property and to the beginning of what we're calling the Pebble Creek Extension, uh, that is approximately a one-mile extension. After you get through the Holz property to get to Pebble Creek Road, we will have, um, a fairly significant amount of improvement to do to the existing road grade that's there. Um, that would be essentially, uh, building into our, uh, our phase two to improve the Holz Trailhead, um, and improve the, the Pebble Creek Main Line to Pebble Creek Road. Um, from there, we will go from where Pebble, where that mainline comes out on Pebble Creek Road, um, our phase two connection to Banks Vernonia Trail will be Pebble Creek Road to Miss Drive over the Green Bridge to the Mill Pond or the lake. Our ultimate phase three connection and the ultimate goal, um, at this moment in time is to negotiate an easement to the adjacent prop, to the, there's a handful of property owners that we've kind of leaned out to. Um, we are going to try to negotiate an easement through their property, which is in between Pebble Creek Road and the Haylam River, and build a pedestrian hybrid bridge to get over to the Mill Pond and ultimately to the Banks Vernonia Trail. Um, this overall is, you know, probably, uh, on track for, uh, to, to become a final connection, uh, successfully complete phase three. We're looking at probably a few years away. Uh, but the big, the big thing that we have established is we are just about there to get through the largest piece of privately owned property that there is a way of making the Banks Vernonia Trail connect to happen. So it's a pretty exciting thing in that regard. How ultimately we make that connection between phase two and phase three, um, there's some negotiating and teamwork and public support and all, and money, a whole lot of things to make that happen. Um, what, you know, is, uh, we've been blessed enough to have Dale as a committee member, um, uh, really try to spearhead this connection before, um, it all ultimately happens to think about, about it in a phased way to communicate to the users that, um, it's, well, and to say that it's important so the users know that there is this connection already here to an extent. So, um, it's just gonna be on a couple of different pathways before we get to its ideal end goal. So, uh, Dale's presentation is ultimately about the logistics of the Vernonia and how we communicate to the users how you get to the Crown Z Trail right now. And we are working on a, um, as short a timeframe as possible to make the, the ideal connection happen. And we have a pretty clear pathway to get almost there with some details to figure out. So, I guess that's the best way I can, uh, establish, uh, or to, uh, explain where I'm coming from with this. Uh, Dale, is there anything that I'm missing there or?
I don't think so, I, I've just been interested in knowing what the committees or what the council's reaction and thoughts are.
Tony's muted, Dale, there you go.
There you go. How's that? Hear me now.
Welcome, Tony.
I've only done about ten thousand of these things, I'm still not used to it. See, I wanna make one point. Uh, years ago, when the state was putting the Banks Vernonia Trail together, their original trailhead was supposed to be the old rail yard, which we now know as the West Oregon, the Senior Center, uh, City Old State Property was wanting to be the trailhead. We, I was on the council or mayor or something in that timeframe. And we made a deal with them, "How about if you moved the trailhead to Anderson Park, therefore allowing this property to be used for city uses and build us a bathroom with showers? And we'll provide the parking." So they built the bathrooms and showers, if you don't know, or if you didn't know, that's where those came from, uh, with an agreement with the state that that's the, the, uh, endpoint for the Banks Vernonia Trail. The one thing we have not done, and I'm sure that because now, five state directors later, we have not provided the parking for, uh, a launch point or for the state park. And now we're looking for the same level of parking for CZ. So this is kind of a synergistic proposal that we're making. It finally cuts the deal hard with the state for those bathrooms that are at Anderson Park. That's the background.
Thank you, Tony.
Is there any, any record of that agreement?
I'm sorry?
Is there any record of that, written record of that agreement?
Is there a reference to that agreement?
Is there a written record of that agreement?
I, clearly, I think the city's off the hook when it comes to the agreement, the handshake. But it, it moved the state from using that very vital piece of property that now the city has a lot of different uses on. And the city didn't have the hundred and sixty thousand dollars to build the bathrooms, which the state built for us. So, that's how that happened.
We also took over maintenance of that trail from there to the, around to the the lake too.
Well, actually, the, the paving, if you, if you must know, the paving for the trail from Anderson Park to the lake was done by the county when I was a commissioner.
We still have the name.
Right.
Thank you for that insight, Dave, Tony. Dale?
Okay, um, so, um, if there's no additional discussion about the three phases, um, I'd be glad to then talk specifically about the, um, my proposal, which in short, as you can see from reading the materials, is simply to designate Anderson Park, uh, specifically the entry area from Adams Avenue, um, as the trailhead and parking for that trailhead as the existing gravelled lot on the corner of Adams and Maple. Um, they are close enough, you know, ideally, they would be, would have parking, uh, right at the trailhead. Uh, that's obviously not practical to do, could create some safety problems. Um, but, um, it is so close that with a, just a little bit of additional signage, um, I think that, um, it would be basically a no-brainer for visitors to be able to find their way to, um, the Banks Vernonia Trail and the CZ Trail connection. Um, and of course, it puts it in a, uh, a good, uh, spot, just within a block from the, um, Bridge Street. Um, uh, I'm gonna be fairly brief in my comments, so, uh, I can get feedback from you folks. But as part of that, um, a key part of, of, uh, any trailhead is to ensure you've got signage so people know how to find the trailhead when riding. And so, um, as part of that, um, I'm proposing that basically we put directional signage on the, on Highway forty-seven, uh, for traffic, uh, coming from the south. Um, that is, say- on Highway forty-seven, uh, for traffic, uh, coming from the south, um, that is, say, from the Banks area, um, it would be on the corner of Highway forty-seven and Maple, um, that would simply be a right turn, um, arrow with, uh, standard, um, signage like similar of what you see on the Banks Vernonia Trail now, so it'd be easily identifiable, um, and for people, uh, driving from, uh, the north, um, it would be at Bridge Street and Adams Avenue where there's an existing, uh, sign pointing people to, uh, to Anderson Park, um, and hopefully, we'd be able to use the same signpost, um, structure. Um, uh, and then, once people find their way to that gravel lot, uh, I'm suggesting that essentially there would be signage that would announce that as the parking for the Anderson Park Trailhead, uh, coming from both directions, both on, uh, Maple and, and, uh, Adams, um, and then in addition to that, it'd have essentially three components. Um, I've put details and photos in the proposal on where that would be and so forth, but that's just an initial idea, uh, but the point is that I think it will, it'll be important to give people information about the trailhead itself and it, and maps of the C Z Trail, as well as the Banks Vernonia Trail, and probably an enlargement map just of, uh, Vernonia, um, as well. Um, so that essentially, that's about for trail users, uh, I'm suggesting that there be an additional sign, um, that would become the permanent merchant sign, I, I call it a merchant sign, but what it is in reality is, um, uh, what I think of as a point of interest sign, it, it includes merchants, but it also includes things that basically are going to attract people to not just different, um, points of interest such as, uh, the, the Historical Museum, which is an obvious one, but a variety of other places that may not be so obvious. Sometimes, for example, people want to find a library if they're on the trail because their kids, their young kids need a quiet place, they need a quiet place, uh, to connect to the internet or something like that, so this would show things like that, um, and it also may show, um, uh, you know, your jamboree and other festivals, essentially something that, uh, really tells people there's a lot more to Vernonia, uh, than the things that they're obviously going to be seeking, there's basically food and drink. The third, uh, type of sign that, um, I think would be great, I, and, um, uh, and when I talked to the, um, historical, historical museum, they've been interested, is some interpretive stuff about, uh, signage about the, uh, cities and the community's history. Um, that strikes me as a great thing to do, and so that falls within the scope of, of, uh, the proposal. Um, uh, and, um, the historical, uh, I understand that the board of the Historical, um, Museum has dedicated, uh, I should say budgeted some money for that signage, so that, so that in terms of budgeting for it, that would, uh, that's not within the budget of what I'm proposing, um, but I do think it'd be a very valuable thing to have. So, um, uh, the only other thing about the parking lot would be that I think it'd be helpful at some site, some type of signage or, uh, help so that users understand that their route to the trailhead proper and the Banks Vernonia and C Z Trails is essentially to continue on Adam Street right into Anderson Park, and that could be done simply with some, uh, a painted stripe or things that are more sophisticated than that, um, that we can, uh, determine. And finally, um, in terms of Anderson Park itself, I think on, uh, one of the attachments, I think it's Attachment Three, I essentially identified three kiosks, one for, for, uh, trail users, one for merchants, and one for, um, uh, historical interpretive information. Um, again, how that's organized there, um, I've thrown out, it's, um, just one possible way of doing it, hopefully, um, uh, we could do it in a much more attractive, uh, fact, what I've shown on the attachment. Um, and lastly, um, uh, you also want to ensure that you've got, um, uh, clear signage so that people can find their way to and from essentially the Holtz, uh, trailhead and the beginning of the county's, uh, responsibility for the trail. So I proposed several intermediate, uh, um, uh, directional signs, uh, between Anderson Park and, uh, and the Holtz Trailhead, uh, that, um, I thought would be useful for, for consideration, but having said that, um, these are simply, uh, you know, my ideas, uh, regardless of, of, uh, of, uh, of, uh, what you, uh, decide to do, I definitely stand ready to help you from a staff support, uh, standpoint. To me, that's actually the thing that's, uh, been hard to come by for the county and I suspect for the city as well, is that, um, it's people, most people are working, I have the luxury of being retired, and I, and I have the luxury of, of, uh, this kind of project falling into, I would say, my lap, because I've always been a math nerd, and I've always been a, a hiker and bicyclist and someone that just loves trails, so to the degree I can help the city, I'd be delighted to do so. And, um, on a finishing note, um, uh, I'll say that, uh, contrary to what I wrote, which is a type of graphical error, um, the budget for the project could be seventy-seven hundred dollars, not ninety-seven hundred dollars, so, um, uh, hopefully, uh, it wouldn't be quite as expensive as I threw out in the proposal. With that, I'd really like to open it up for questions, comments, concerns.
Yeah, I want to make one more point, uh, in terms of the funding, we're, we're volunteering to do the research and find the funding and help with the grant, I mean, it shouldn't be a difficult issue right now, there's, there's quite a few different revenue streams that are out there that are being available as a result of COVID and other economic crisis, but I think that we're going to have a pretty easy time finding the funding, in fact, there, we've done some research, at least I have, uh, there is, there is actually a pavement that we could use to meet steam restrictions in terms of, of pervious surfaces, there's a parking like, like that in, in St. Albans that, a few years ago, it's, it's amazing, it's blacktop surface, but it's pervious and meets all the restrictions that FEMA has, and it's not cheap, and at some point, I think that we would want to look at finding the funding to pave that thing.
Excuse me. Uh, Dale, Webb?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, is there any consideration of the trailhead in Vernonia of having a port name attached to it instead of just tagging on to Anderson? Has there been any thought to that?
Um, I certainly had, although I had not thought of that specifically, what I had thought of is that it's useful for visitors who aren't familiar with the local area to be able to easily find, um, what they're looking for. Anderson Park is on maps, although I have to tell you, I've Googled directions to Anderson Park on both, uh, Google Maps and, uh, Apple Maps, and they don't take you to Anderson Park, so that there's some, some problems with that. Um, but, uh, but again, if, uh, it certainly if the city decided that you wanted to, uh, name it something different than that, um, you know, I'd, I'll support whatever the city should do.
So I, I wouldn't mind chiming in on that, uh, every other trailhead that we have named on this Crown Zellerback Trail has historical significance, so I think if there was a way to work that in, I can understand Dale's point on the ability to find the trailhead and, um, and to have some kind of consistent naming mechanism, I, I don't know, is there, is there history behind the name Anderson, um, but, uh, any chance we can to celebrate history on the Crown Z Trail, I think, is, uh, it fits a theme that we've been running off of for a while now, so.
Uh, there's one other point that, that's sensitive, and we talked about it, and we, you know, there's a, there's a reticence to talk about it publicly, but I think we need to. Now, Humple's property to, uh, to the highway, it's called Coon Creek, I, I'm suggesting we call it Raccoon Creek for obvious reasons, or something else, I mean, that's the historical name, however, in this day and age, we probably should be sensitive to that.
Oh, I, I, we've labeled that on the map, the Pebble Creek Extension.
Perfect, yeah. Counselor McNair, I, I, I heard you had a question or a concern or...
Well, thank you, Mayor Hobart, um, the proposed parking lot, and the maintenance of that falls under our street plan, um, and our street, street budget, and, uh, currently we're trying like hell to use that, uh, to uproot, um, the streets and the community. Uh, currently, that, that parking lot is in fair, fairly good shape, um, but it is gravel, um, it's hard to say how long that would last, um, if it, if it saw, uh, a significant amount of use. Um, Anderson Park is, is our, uh, money producer for the Parks Department, um, I'd, I'd be really reluctant to do anything that might impinge on that, um, if this helps, so be it, but, uh, usually, this type of thing is a pass-through, and, uh, you're probably not, you may see some camping, I suppose, from it, but, uh, um, those are the two issues that really stand out to me. Um, I'm curious if when Banks put it, when the trailhead was put in Banks, was that, uh, funded by the state Parks Department?
No, it was not, it was funded by Washington County.
So it wasn't funded by Banks itself?
Uh, no, the city banks may have put something in it, but it was mostly Washington County, the state hadn't, hadn't developed that, uh, the Washington County's the one that was responsible for paving from the county line to Banks, and County, Columbia County was responsible for paving the other way, and if you remember correctly, we paved ours fifteen years before the, Washington County paved theirs, and now it's all under the, the purview of the state of Oregon.
Well, anyway, those are the two issues that, uh, concern me.
Counselor Wagner, I saw you had your hand up.
I did, um, so are we going to install meter parking there?
Um, uh, I'm certainly not proposing, uh, that, although it does, this, your question gives me a good opportunity to, um, say one of the things about, uh, what I'd said in the introduction to the proposal, which is, um, um, my, my proposal's immediate suggestion is to try to pull something together that can be done fairly quickly in time for the, by next spring, um, but having said that, um, I certainly stand ready to help the city make additional improvements, um, and so, or in terms of paid parking, my expense is that if that's something that could be done, if you decided you wanted to do that, and that's something that could be done by next spring, it makes, uh, sense that it's something you want to do, but it can't be done that by next spring, um, particularly in terms of financing it, um, then that's something I'd be willing to help you out, uh, if you were to decide to do that, but I, I wasn't taking a, a position on that.
Dale, Webb?
Well, our previous discussions about the, making that area a part of our city off-street parking area plus the paved lot out front, but part of that discussion revolved around signage and direction, uh, I think, uh, dovetail on in with this project, kills two birds with one stone, um, you know, at least, I think, for the near-term future, the, the use, I mean, that, that's what we want to direct the people, right now, we're getting people parking along the streets down in there, uh, that's not really an issue at this time either, they're not paying the parks fee either, so they're not collecting, and, and that, that, I think if we do a meter parking, you'll just shove them off onto our public streets, which I would do, but, um, so anyhow, I, I just think this kind of dovetails together with kind of the direction we were wanting to go to begin with, uh, and if we can get some funding to put the signage in, uh, that takes some of the burden off of us, maybe we can coerce the county to bring their grader over and grade the gravel lot for us every couple of years, and, uh, we can get a benefit out of that, we throw some rock on it and they grade it.
Hey, Rick, can I get a second here?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Casey.
Uh, well, I can't, I can't promise you the county grader and city limits at the moment, but, uh, um, but I can say that putting on my, uh, my Tourism Committee Act, um, I'm pretty confident we can really make, uh, one way or another, fund the improvements that Dale has proposed through our Columbia County Tourism Initiative efforts, um, would be a, a very easy way to fund at least a big chunk of it, it's always nice to have, um, the other side, which in this case, uh, obviously is the city of Vernonia to show a stake in the game of, of some amount of commitment to working with, um, those committee, the committee initiative efforts, uh, for tourism dollars, um, so, um, just some amount of, uh, embracing, uh, the concept and wanting to work with our tourism initiative, um, that's been formed, yeah, I think what the funding really, the funding really do is more of the partnership and agreeing that, hey, let, let's make, let's make this happen and make it more clear for the users on how to, uh, uh, connect between the trails and then, more importantly, how to, uh, come and enjoy and, and, uh, uh, fund operations within the city of Vernonia, come eat there and, and, uh, buy their snacks, beverages, and, and whatever else, um, while they're coming through, uh, so Dale's, um, plan here really, I think incorporates downtown Vernonia quite well with Banks Vernonia and C Z Trail, and that's been really the, the goal the whole time, why else have a trail if, uh, through the whole area if, if people don't come and, and support the city of Vernonia, so, um, I think the funding for these improvements are definitely there, we just, um, in my mind, we need just the city of Vernonia to say, um, let's keep them informed with the plan that Dale's presented, uh, make whatever tweaks make necess, uh, are necessary, but, uh, getting held up on how we fund it, um, my boy, the seven, seven, eight thousand dollars, we can come up with absolutely to make these things happen, so.
Well, I, I agree, Casey and, and Dale, and, and I just think it's a golden opportunity, actually, um, the location of that, that, um, old West Oregon Electric Site, uh, becoming a city-owned parking lot, i- it's, it's not right on top of Anderson Park, but it's close enough where, um, uh, people that use the trail could park there, and, and it's right almost in the middle of the downtown corridor of Vernonia, which would really help our, our businesses, small businesses, and it's just a win-win situation the way I look at it, and, um, I, I think we're, we're sitting on a goldmine there for tourism, so. Dale?
Yeah, and you're speaking of that, so, so we're bringing more tourism into the down- Yeah, and you're speaking of that, so we're bringing more tourism into the downtown local merchants. So maybe that, uh, you know, the ordinance we were trying to pass earlier last year, uh, that, uh, might make it a little more justifiable for the funding, the upkeep that we were looking at. So I'm sure we're going to be addressing that in the future, so, um, I, I think this all comes together for us myself, so I'm, I'm in favor of moving forward.
Mayor Hobart.
Yes, go ahead.
This is, this is Counselor Allen. I'd like to thank everybody that's worked on the CZ Trail and their presentation tonight and the thoughtful packet. I have went through it. Uh, there's really nothing I don't like about it. Um, the only thing I wanted to mention was, um, uh, the infrastructure from the proposed parking to the park, uh, we're lacking sidewalks, and we've got a makeshift bridge with a steel plate. So hopefully the long-term goals and maybe some lighting for the parking, I know it's, you can't get everything at once, but, uh, I think it's something to think about, uh, some of the improvements there. Um, as we move forward, it proves to work out perhaps, but, uh, my personal opinion on it is, I think it's a, uh, as Mayor Hobart and some of the other counselors have, have kind of alluded to, that, that is a, a win-win situation, and, uh, we're really, uh, um, I, I personally am, uh, happy to see the CZ Trail to connect to Renonia, and I, I think it's going to be mostly a positive, so, uh, I'm ready to move forward.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Go ahead, Dale Latham. We can't hear you. Can't hear you, Dale.
Dale, it says you're not connected to audio.
A good friend of mine who's a retired architect, yeah, Kim Isaacson, um, is willing to volunteer his time to come up with, uh, some concepts for how to deal with, um, uh, sort of the land landscaping and hardscaping, including the fact that there's a sidewalk for a small portion of that, uh, path and lack of sidewalk for the rest of it. Um, uh, we talked about it when we were up there last week, and, uh, I, I haven't talked to him since then, but, um, it's something that's, uh, he noticed and, um, would like to try to address.
I, I've got some ideas in terms of funding, and it includes lighting and sidewalks. So, uh, once we start getting concepts, as Dale mentioned, you know, we can get a straw man going, then we can start putting price tags on it. But we didn't want to go that far until we had the okey-dokey from the city.
And I don't know if you heard, uh, part of that, Dale got cut out, but the person he's talking about, uh, for design help, has done some tremendous designs already for the CZ Trail, so, um, that's a, that's a heck of an opportunity to utilize those services for, uh, uh, donated services, uh, very professional, so.
Is he similar, um, Casey, to the ruly, ruly head, trailhead there that she designed that?
Uh, yes, it is. Actually, he, um, uh, ruly trailhead, along with the whole trailhead, at least draft conceptual plans. Um, and that, that specific designer has done many public improvement projects for a large firm. So it's not just somebody as a hobby level, it's a, it's a true professional that's retired and trying to get back. Um, so something that's worth, uh, a whole lot. Um, so, uh, different than a hobby level is, is, uh, somebody that has done big, big projects, so.
Sure. Stephanie, are we, uh, asking for a general consensus tonight, or do we need a motion to move ahead?
Um, I would request a motion, uh, directing staff to work with Dale Latham and his group to move forward with this project.
Okay, thank you. If, if there's no, you know, are there any more questions or discussions?
I have one more question, Mayor Hobart.
Oh, go ahead, Counselor Allen.
This one would probably be to Dale and the group, uh, maybe even Tony Hyde or all of them. What consideration was there for having the Mill Pond area as a trailhead? I know there's people on our Parks Commission that, that, uh, Parks Committee that, uh, maybe felt that it might have been better placed there. I just want to see, hear your opinion on that.
I could tell you where, where I can come on that. Uh, first of all, I've seen Mill Pond parking full more than once, especially last spring. And secondly, there seems to be an assumption that the city owns enough adjoining property to build more parking, which is simply not true as far as I'm concerned, unless the city has acquired property that I'm not aware of. That's not under the city's purpose. So what you're talking about is purchasing more property because simply, we're, we're really talking about a staging area for motorhomes, horse trailers, et cetera. And I want you to imagine a minute, four minutes, motorhomes and horse trailers mixing with the, the casual traffic that's in the Mill Pond area right now. So short of purchasing wetlands and trying to get the state and the feds to convert them, you're up against a rock and a hard spot for parking at Mill Pond.
I'd, I'd like to add, um, uh, my perspective on that. Um, I definitely think that Anderson Park is a, is a, is an option. Um, but I didn't propose it as an alternative here for a couple of reasons, and, and they may reflect my bias, but it's good to know what my biases are. And, um, one of my biases is, uh, clearly as a user, uh, typically when someone, especially when you come into a, a community that has services, um, it's helpful to know where to get to downtown. Um, and, and it's helpful that, uh, the trailhead parking be close to downtown services. Um, and, um, I can't remember whether it was Dory, who you folks know as the manager of the, uh, RV park at Anderson Park. Um, but I've been told on more than one occasion that people sort of have gone out to Anderson Park thinking that that might be where town is, to come back and find her or somebody else and say, well, where's town? Um, that's largely what they're looking for, and although we could do that, we could still put the main trailhead out there. Um, people often want to begin or end their trip by buying something. So for a visitor's standpoint, it seemed like a logical place, uh, to basically make visitors happy. And obviously, the other bias I have, and I got this from many years of doing Cycle Oregon in particular, who were dedicated to increasing the economic viability of small communities through, um, active tourism, is that, um, uh, that's the most likely location, in my opinion, to really generate money for the community through a trailhead. So that's largely, uh, was my assessment on it.
Well, th- thank you for that, and I do not disagree with that. Um, currently, we may have some folks at Anderson Park use that area as overflow parking, and I'm just wondering how this would affect that, or if we would be a shared parking.
Um, actually, um, when you say overflow parking, you're saying they use that to access the trail?
No, I mean the camper. Sometimes they bring two or three vehicles, you know, so.
Um, yeah, I'm sorry, I, I don't.
I could tell you my vision for that. My vision is that eventually the, the, well, food banks moving out as we speak, I'm not sure about the American Legion, but there's an opportunity down the road to expand that parking. And frankly, if you follow the, 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 uh, model that's done in Cannon Beach, which I think is a good one, that's a great place for public bathrooms as well, uh, as the expanded parking.
I don't disagree.
Good point, Tony. Yeah, Dale, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to add something to what Tony said. Um, one thing that I found really exciting about working on the CZ Trail is that, um, I found that the folks that are likely to fund us, which are, uh, at least the folks that I've been in, in contact with through this project, have been essentially Travel Oregon, Travel Portland, and the Oregon Parks and Rec, or Oregon Department of Parks and Recreation. They're excited about, um, what's we're trying to do, and they're anxious to help. And, uh, and that's where we come down to money. And I really encourage the community to, uh, sort of dream big, even though I'm nominally working on something to get us, get in place by next spring. I definitely encourage you to do, um, some thinking similar to what Tony's, uh, what, along the lines of Tony, whether you agree with his specific suggestions or not. Think what you'd like for that space, um, in the long run. And we can basically see what we can do for the short-run project to ensure that it dovetails in with that. So it would be a logical progression down the road. Um, you know, there's nothing more fun than dreaming about things, and with funding there, uh, potentially, um, it makes sense to me that we would do it, um, you know, the right way, uh, the first time. And if, if we have to cut back our dreams because of budget, then we can do so. But, um, I, I'm not sure I said so explicitly, but, um, I'm, I'm also very willing to do the staff work to help the city apply for grants that would be, just be through the city, uh, as opposed to through the county or the CZ Trail Committee. So, um, so for what it's worth, I wanted to mention that.
Thank you, Dale.
Um, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Tony.
I've got to check out before I do your thank you for listening. I think that the, the city's in a great opportunity mode right now. Um, and, for example, Barrett Creek, you know, that's one of those things we all ignore, but it's at some point, we really need to deal with that. It is a salmon-burring stream with steel plate over it. And in most places, it's covered. This might be an opportunity to use hazard mitigation monies to deal with that in, in conjunction with this whole proposal. There's a lot of opportunities. But I have to check out, just for the record, my name is Tony, 382 83, Renonia, Oregon. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Tony, and thanks for your, all your input, and thanks for participating tonight. Thank you, Tony.
Bye, guys.
Does the council wish to, um, make a motion to direct this to staff to move forward with this in working with Dale Latham?
Again, I so moved.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
All second.
Second's been made. Stephanie, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Hobart.
Aye.
Counselor Allen.
Aye.
Counselor Webb.
Aye.
Counselor McNair.
Aye.
Counselor Wagner.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
And thank you, Dale, and Casey, if you're still there, and thanks for the presentation, and, and, um, if you want us to remain online, you can, we're just finishing up the meeting tonight, but if you wish to, uh, to leave us, that's fine too, so, thank you.
May I, may I ask, may I ask one concluding question? Is it, is it okay, is it okay with the council, get a sense of the council, if I essentially, uh, talk to my friend Kim and, and develop some concepts, uh, that we can, uh, provide to you, to consider?
I, I would say that would be fine. It's fine with me, Dale.
Okay, but let me know if any of you have any concerns about that, or if there's any ideas that you want to, um, uh, pass on to me. I left my email message as part of my intro here, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dale.
Thank you, and, uh, huge thanks to Dale. You guys are as lucky as everybody is in Columbia County to have a, uh, somebody from Portland that's as dedicated as Dale, so I do have a good feeling. Dale is one heck of an asset, and, uh, we're lucky to have him, so thank you so much, Dale, for putting this together, so. Okay, thanks. Okay, I'm out of here. Bye.
Okay, we'll see you guys later. Thank you.
Bye.
Okay, the last item on the new business is staff report, Axon Body Camera Purchase. Keith Connor, are you there?
I am here. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, so first off, I'd like to start by, um, apologizing, because I told a lot of you guys I wasn't planning on any big purchases this year. Um, I still stand by that. This was not planned. Um, we started having some issues with our, our body cameras, and I originally, um, went to Axon to get some, some quotes on just a, a one-time purchase. Um, they're now on version three of their camera. They don't even make the ones that we're using anymore. They're better than, oh, they're roughly six years old. Um, originally, we got a grant from CIS to purchase the cameras. Um, I contacted CIS in hopes that there might be more funding available, and there is not. Um, in speaking with Axon, they presented me with, uh, not only a one-time purchase plan, but they also presented me with a, uh, the camera replacement program, which is what you guys have in your, your packet there as far as the, the quote is concerned. What that includes basically is that the first year's payment, um, pays for the cameras, the docking station, um, all the software licensing and the storage. Um, at two and a half years, they automatically do a replacement of the dock and, and the cameras. Um, and then they do that again at five years. Um, so essentially, we're just paying for cameras over time for five years, um, at that, that total cost, um, with a lump sum payment once a year. Um, that also includes full warranty for the full five-year period. So that's why I brought that to you, is originally, if, if I do a one-time purchase, we get a one-year warranty. Um, if something breaks, we're paying for it outside of that. Um, so because this will affect future numbers in the budget, um, we wanted to bring it to, to council for, to, to decide which way to go. And that is all I have for that report. Do you guys have any questions?
Hi, new chief. This is Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Are you looking at the body two or body three, did you say?
They're the Axon Body Three.
It's the third one? Okay. And I, I actually did a little bit of research on it. Um, is it something the cameras will stay on all day since they have a 12-hour recording battery, or?
Yeah, those, those should last, uh, the full shift. The original ones lasted us a full shift when we first got them. They, they no longer, they, they're lasting about six to seven hours. Um, and then sometimes they're, they've gotten to the point to where sometimes they activate, sometimes they don't. Um, we currently have a... Uh, these ones actually, the, the door is always, the camera technically is always on. It's always doing a, uh, well, it's preset to do a, a 30-second pre-record. It's always doing a, well, it's preset to do a 30-second pre-record. So when you activate the camera, it recorded everything 30 seconds previous to that. But yeah, it's just a tap on the front. There's no door on them then. At least our current version doesn't have a door on them. They just have an on-off switch.
What was our, what's your current policy on use for mandating of our officers?
They're supposed to be using them on all professional contexts. So traffic stops, if we go to a call or something like that, they're supposed to be using them. So just to say hi to somebody on the street, it doesn't include that currently. There's been some discussion about whether or not we should be recording all day. And there's also been some discussion about us being mandated to keep our videos regardless of the circumstances for a minimum of two years. That hasn't became law yet.
And when you mentioned grants, the feds have gave out $73 million in grants from 2015 to 2019. Have we looked into that?
I've seen some grants that were no longer available. I don't know if there's any fresh ones out there. Some of them had due dates that were like a month previous to when I started looking at this.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the chief?
This is Counselor McNair. Can you hear me, Chief?
Yeah.
So in contract services, you've got, you're still paying money to the sheriffs on that contract shared?
Current, currently, no.
Well, you have it in the current budget.
Yeah, it's in the current budget. We haven't used it. We continue to put it in there. We still have not signed a new contract and we're outdated over a year. So I'm guessing the new contract's probably not going to happen, and we've been holding our own so far.
Right, with the added manpower. So what's that, and do you know what that's worth?
I want to say we estimated it right at about $6,000.
So right there is the money you can use.
Yeah, yeah. I had a little bit, I knew I was going to have a little bit of a cushion in there already to cover, had more than enough to cover this fiscal year. It's just going to be them, the next four after this that we'll have to budget for that or essentially going to probably make adjustments to that line item to where I'm just not paying for services from the SO anymore.
Yeah, and you'll be making payments to Axum?
Yeah, Axon.
Yeah. That's why I just was looking at the budget. There's not a lot anywhere else you can go. That's probably one of the few.
Yeah, I mean, I could probably go with, be cool, probably add a, I could probably move some out of vehicle maintenance because we're not going to probably use a lot of that, but.
Yeah. I wouldn't like to see you do that. The more you maintain those vehicles in the long run, the better they are. So unless you overbudget it. And I'm sure you didn't do that.
We're running two fairly new cars right now, so I, I'm not anticipating a high output right now. But I do have a couple of patrol cars that we're going to be running for quite a while that have big tears in the seats from holster wear, and the seats need to be rebuilt. So there's going to be a little bit of an expense there.
Yeah, duct tape. I got the same thing going on in Crummies. Right as you get out of the rig, for some reason, they break apart right there. Anyway, that's where I was looking at. So with that, I'm relinquish my time.
All right. Any other questions for Chief Connor? Or discussions? Excuse me.
I got one more question, Mayor.
Go ahead, Counselor Allen.
Chief Connor, what was the catalyst that pushed this to the forefront suddenly?
Well, I've known about it for a little over a month, been doing a little bit of research and of course contacting CIS. Part of my issues that I keep running into now is, of course, in our police reporting, oftentimes the officers will document that they were required to tell people when they're being recorded, and it's documented in there. And then I get attorneys sending me a request for video that I don't have because the camera didn't activate. So that's kind of what pushed it forth was I'm getting a lot of requests for videos that I don't have. And it's kind of portraying kind of a scene that maybe we're being selective on what we're recording. And even though I know that's not the case, I can't prove that it's not the case.
Got you. Yeah, I see where this gives you the ability to pull it back down, take out stuff that you need to for court cases or whatnot. What's the policy on family members getting recordings if something was to happen? Because I know some cities let immediate family gather footage.
As in, can you give me an example? I mean, I know I get requests for video oftentimes from family members, like on a DUI case, I'll have a family member request video for that because they're, the case isn't adjudicated yet, they have to go to the DA's office to get that stuff, so.
I was reading where some of the, some of this stuff is, went to where there was a death had occurred, basically. And immediate family has been ruled to where they have a right to see the footage. That's, I guess, what I'm asking if we have policies on that.
I want to say we do, just because we have Lexible, but I don't want to speak out a term. That's not a policy that I remember reading right off the top of my head in our policy books, about 400 pages. So generally, all of our police reports do include videos and photos are public record, but would be subject to approval from at least from the district attorney.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussions? Was this just a presentation, Stephanie? We need a motion to
No, there's, there's a motion on the staff report.
Okay.
This is Counselor Wagner. Go ahead.
Counselor Wagner is first. Go ahead, Counselor Wagner, make the motion.
All right. I move that we approve the purchase of the Axon Body Cameras as presented by Chief Connor.
Is there a second?
Counselor Allen, all second.
Counselor Allen, second. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Counselor McNair? Counselor McNair?
Ah, still on mute. Aye.
Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Business from departments.
I guess you got me again. I don't have an official report this time, but I will update you guys on, you know, that we've been extraordinarily busy. Some of you probably heard about some of the thefts going on. We've been working with the sheriff's office to help clear up some of that. And we've also done three search warrants of our own over the past month, so. And we've got two more to do, and hopefully I'll be able to explain some of those cases to you here before too long.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Any other comments or questions for the chief?
Counselor Webb, commending our local apartment. They've been doing some good work here lately and solving some cases. I think that's helping put some citizens' minds at ease a little more anyhow. There's still some work. They'll get them.
It's killing our overtime budget, but we're working it.
I appreciate also how responses
Okay, thank you.
as well.
Go ahead and finish, Counselor.
Okay. Yeah. You broke up. You got cut off, Counselor Wagner.
I was just saying that I would also like to commend the chief and all of our officers for all their hard work and their responsiveness. Even when it's not an emergency, when it's more like a welfare check or just checking up on something, I really appreciate everything y'all are doing.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. There are no ordinances or resolutions. There's no correspondence. And I'm assuming there's no city administrator report because the city administrator is on vacation. Is that correct, Stephanie?
Correct.
Okay. Items from the mayor and counselors. Any counselors have any concerns, discussion?
I have two things, Mayor.
Okay, Counselor Allen.
First, the Parks Committee has, most of them have let it be known to me that they'd like to continue or get back to holding meetings. Stephanie, can you reach out and confirm that and let me know?
They need to reach out to their committee chair. Did you hear that?
Yeah, I heard that. Maybe you, maybe the committee chair needs to be asked. I don't know. I think there's been some frustration, but that's just all they wanted to say about that.
I talk to the committee chairs often, and unless he doesn't have a quorum, they can't meet. So if they just want to reach out to him, let him know that they're ready to have a meeting now, then we can go ahead and get that scheduled.
Yeah, I just was hoping for some feedback from, from maybe you or Josette or somebody about it. And my other, my other thing, I was, I was wondering how it went with the state on the testifying with the inspecting issue. I believe Counselor Wagner was on the call, and Josette was going to call in. Anybody have an update?
I did not sit in on the call because Josette was going to be sitting in on the call. It's important to have a single voice, not multiple persons.
While I don't have what was formally done there, I know that it was favorable for us.
Oh, great. Well, we'll have to ask Josette when she gets back, I guess. That's all I had. Thank you.
Counselor Webb, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on the first that we saw down at the lake here yesterday is the helicopters dipping water. And we did have to get the police department involved a little. The helicopters wanted to pull pretty close to the trail and to the dock, and we had people standing underneath the rotor wash down there. They thought it was a great air conditioner, but some of us thought it wasn't such a good idea. So we taped off the dock and so moved people back a little bit, so. But I talked to my dad. He said he could never recall that they've ever done that before either, so. They didn't even dent the water level. I still gained on them, so.
How many, I know they were going all afternoon. Do you know how many buckets they pulled out of there, Dale?
No, I wasn't counting them. But yeah, two helicopters. Just another reason for us to keep that lake topped up. We get a wildfire right around. Those helicopters got a quick, they got a grab there. So something we should keep in the back of our mind when we, when we're thinking about, well, it's costing us money to pump her in there. Well, it could save us a lot, too. So anyhow, thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Speaking of water, just to remind the council, we are on a water containment, I believe. It dropped down to 12, I think, a couple days ago, didn't it, Dale? 12.
I actually can report on that. Our gauge is not working, so we had the water master come out and measure it, and it was at a 12.1, I believe. So I have that in an email from her as proof.
Okay.
So it's justifiable.
I was wondering, because the gauge is working, but they probably got to recalibrate the, what's coming out of it. And I've been waiting to see the little pyramid in there that shows that they did a, I suspicion that's what happened, but I couldn't see that they did a reading. But they'll probably show up any day.
Yeah, I don't know why they haven't updated it yet. They did that, what, I think it was Thursday? So I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody have anything?
Mayor Hobart?
Yes, go ahead, Counselor.
I have a couple of questions for my fellow councilmen if I'd be so kind to allow me to.
Go ahead.
So Counselor Webb, are you aware of any interagency agreement with the city fire department or the ODF to dip water out of that lake?
No, I'm not aware of one. I, I don't know. There might be statutes on the books that when they have an emergency like that, they can take any water source. Yeah, I mean, that would be
That's quite possible, but what, at this day and age, they should have some sort of a, where they contact the city and say that we're going to do this, and then we have in place some sort of method to assure the safety of people down there at the lake for the ingress and egress of that, those helicopters.
So I can speak to part of that because speaking to Chief Connor there yesterday, he was notified and that they were going to do that. And he went down and observed the first helicopter dipped out of the center of the lake. And so he deemed that there really wasn't a safety issue there. And for some reason, they changed where they wanted to grab the water. There's a lot of vegetation in the lake, and if they grab in that vegetation, especially the one helicopter was having a hard time lifting off because the air was so hot, that he had to actually dump a little water in his bucket every time he lifted. And if that weed gets in the gate, you know, he just loses his water. And I watched if that happened, he had to do it, go around and redip. And so they found a hole over there by that dock that they preferred. So yeah, that's a discussion that needs to be had, probably with the local fire department. yeah, that's a discussion that needs to be had, probably with the local fire department. Maybe identifying the better holes out there. If we put in a buoy or something, I don't know. It'd just be something we should talk about, and then the safety aspects of it.
Well, no matter what they do, they have to cross that trail, the pathway to come in and go out. And so that pathway probably should be shut down when they're doing that. So the next question is Counselor Allen. Have you had communication with your chairman of that parks committee that somehow they're not, staff has not been responsible, responsive to them? JR, are you there? Must have ducked out.
Would you like me to respond, Bruce?
No, I really wanted to know his response to it, that in terms of whether or not they tried to contact staff and somehow they had an issue. If they didn't have an issue, then the proper response is for them to do exactly what you said.
So you don't want me to respond because I know the answer to some of that?
If you've got something to add to it, Stephanie, that's fine. I just was trying to clarify some issues.
I talk regularly with Randy. We actually just talked last week about seeing if they have a quorum to meet. When I reached out to all the committees before, they did not. I know Jason Wheelock talks regularly with Counselor Allen, and he did say that he wanted to have a meeting when we first opened up meetings after the very strict COVID shutdown. But at that time, we did not have a quorum of the parks committee that was comfortable being at a meeting. That is evolving. I just talked, like I said, I talked to Randy, who is the committee chair about that, and we're actually supposed to meet hopefully sometime this week to discuss it.
Good, good. That's the proper avenue is to go through the, for the committee chair to access staff and set up something.
Correct.
In my view. Those are the two questions I had, maybe.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Any other questions or discussions before we move to the action item summary? I don't know if we have an action item summary tonight, but we might.
I can get through one a little bit. So staff is going to work with the Lincoln School applicants regarding their building permit and their conditional use permit in relation to the conservation use permit. Staff is also going to work with Dale Latham and his group for the Trailhead, and staff is going to move forward with purchasing the Axon body cameras.
Okay.
So, and staff's going to work with the committees regarding meetings.
Okay, thank you very much. And I am going to do a ride-along tomorrow morning with the chief at 9:00 AM to just ride around and check out the body cameras and talk about other things, so. Just wanted to let everyone know that, and so with no other discussion and action item summaries, I'd like to adjourn this meeting. Let's round it off to 9:00 AM. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.